During the high school choir, the Badger Choir, and High School Chamber Orchestra. The orchestra winter concert in the Silver Lining Arts Center is on Monday, December fifteenth at six thirty. Our auditioned choirs, Vivace and the Concert Choir, went to Carthage College on November sixth for the Lakeside Choral Festival. They each prepared music and participated in workshop with the Carthage Choir Director. They then got to perform in the Carthage Chapel where Vivace performed "Give Way Jordan" and Concert Choir performed "Dear Old Shiz" from Wicked. Students will be choosing their courses for the next school year between December first and December ninth. On Wednesday, November nineteenth during flexi, the College and Career Center is hosting a mock interview workshop for students to practice answering questions. During the October class meetings, students and staff have been focused on digital citizenship. In each meeting, we talked through what it means to follow the WBSC way while online, just like we should in the real world. I'll now hand it to Bella, who will introduce clubs and curriculars.
Hi, I'm Bella Downs, and I'm a junior at East. I was at the Carthage field trip, and we went and got like a whole tour of the college. And then the guy that was working with us was really nice, and we got to sing "Dear Old Shiz." It was really fun, and the chapel there is really pretty, and the acoustics are awesome. Our high school is putting on a fall play, Puffs. It is a comedic show revolving around the happenings at a certain school of magic taking place over seven years. Their performances are taking place on November fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. Auditions for the school musical, Six, will take place on November seventeenth and eighteenth. This musical is all about the six wives of Henry, King Henry the Eighth, and is a pop rendition of their experiences. Rehearsals will begin in December, and the shows will be in February. Both East and, West and East NHS have begun the school year with East's new member induction on October thirteenth and West on October twenty-second. Both schools participated in a highway cleanup of Highway forty-five on Saturday, November eighth. This cleanup was a success, and our students made a great impact on our community. East NHS is hosting a penny drive in November in hopes of raising money for the Children's Hospital. We will be collecting change from those willing to donate, and all of our proceeds will go to this cause.
Hi, I'm Quinn. I am also a junior at East, and the girls swim and dive headed to sectionals this Saturday, November eighth at Germantown. Ella and Blythe are both headed to state in the one hundred fly and dive. West Soccer lost a heartbreak on Saturday, November eleventh in Homestead in sectional finals. State Cross Country was held in Wisconsin Rapids was a positive experience. The West Boys Team took eleventh place as a team, and senior Ethan Hackelman finished twentieth, and sophomore Cade Wani took twenty-fifth. Chloe Miller also traveled to Wisconsin Rapids for East Girls State Cross Country, where she placed around eightieth. To send these athletes to state, the drum line walks them down the main hallway at the end of the school day. Congratulations to Jaden, Aiden, Benjamin, and Christopher for representing West Bend and the Trail Sharks at the State Mountain Biking Competition. Next up is regionals. Good luck. Winter sports are starting today, which includes some changes to the gymnastics team. They will be combining East and West into one team this year.
And then we just have one more thing to say, that starting next month, we're going to be doing a teacher shout-out. So as a team, Haley, Quinn, and I decided that we wanted to recognize teachers at the high school each month who are going above and beyond. So we'll choose these teachers from personal experience, staff shout-outs, and just general recognition. So that'll start next month, and I already have the teacher picked out.
Excellent. Well, we'll save it as a surprise, but she'll tell us in upcoming updates who received the shout-out, right? Excellent.
Get excited.
Very nice. Ladies, thank you for coming on a chilly November night to keep us updated. We appreciate your updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is public participation. I wasn't provided any comment cards in advance. I see none in the audience, so we'll move now to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have the following items to consider: minutes of the October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five Regular Board Meeting and Executive Session; we have no contracts or resignations or retirements tonight; a monetary donation for the High School Robotics Program; High School Course Planning Guide; and disbursements posted to November seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Are there any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Joe. Excuse me. We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Thank you, that motion carries. We move now to reports, and our first report tonight is from our clerk, our board clerk, Melanie Ergot, and it's Clerk's Report to the Community Regarding Deadlines for Filing for Board Candidacy or Non-Candidacy for the Spring 2026 Elections. With that long introduction, Melanie.
All right, thank you. So, an election is to be held in the School District of West Bend on Tuesday, April seventh of 2026. The following offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed: The Office for School Board, incumbent June Krieger; School Board, Kelly Lang; and School Board, Chad Temez. The term of office for School Board members is three years, beginning on Monday, April twenty-seventh, 2026, and expiring on April twenty-second of 2029. A description of the school district boundaries can be obtained from the School District Office. The deadline for incumbents to file a notice of non-candidacy is December twenty-sixth, 2025, by five p.m. A campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than five p.m. on Tuesday, January sixth, 2026, in the Office of the School District Clerk at the Education Service Center, located at 735 South Main Street, West Bend, Wisconsin, 53095. If a primary is necessary, the primary will be held on February seventeenth of 2026. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions on that announcement? All right, we move then to our next report, which is our construction report, and Tim Harder, our Director of Facilities and Technology, is coming to the podium to present that report. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, board members. Pull this up here real quick. So, a couple things this evening as we go forward, a brief construction update as we go through. First and foremost, as we know, we did a large project, both Green Tree and McLean, this summer related to windows. And so, as you go through tonight's presentation, somebody much better at taking photos than myself, Findorf brought in one of their photographers, takes some photos on that Thursday, Friday that we had off. So you'll see some of those photos as you go through what that looks like this evening. So as we talk about construction update, we are done with putting in glass in almost every single window. At McLean, on the left, you see some photos pulled from Google Maps prior to the photos that we currently have here today in the building. As I get into the details of it and so forth, you'll see where they're at with the windows. However, this last week, they did put in the two pieces of glass that can constitute those two round windows that are on the gym side there. We're waiting for some of the detail pieces to come in as we go there and so forth, but just to show the, just the drastic change of the openness of the windows, et cetera, as we go forward, I'm sure Jen and Nancy and others will be sharing the other photos that they took that day as part of that. While school's in session, and we're in a downturn in the amount of construction that we are working on, we continue to do some work at both Green Tree and McLean. So when we designed our buildings, the feedback from our staff was is they wanted one operable window in each one of their classrooms for those nice days, not like today, to get a little bit of fresh air in to the classroom. And so those operable window pieces typically take longer in the ordering process. We were notified that those are being shipped, and some might actually showed up today. And our subcontractor, Katie, will be actually starting installing those, so each classroom will have one operable window that they'll be able to open and get a little bit of fresh air in with the screens and so forth. We do that in a combination of work before staff get there, and students sometimes starting at five-thirty in the morning Saturdays. And then we also work with both principals to find larger chunks of time where they can come in and work in a room when kids are not in the building. At McLean, they're fitting up, finishing up some of those metal trim pieces and clocking, as I talked about there. Both buildings, their PA System Control Units have started to show up, so they've been spending the last month and a half wiring the whole building, putting in speakers and so forth. Now it's really working on what they call those head-in units and getting those set up and starting to do second shift testing at those. Clock system installations are being completed over the next two weeks at both buildings. Over Thanksgiving, we are hoping to set the generator up at Green Tree. So, a lot of that pre-work has been done already. We're hoping to set that right before Thanksgiving, and then over the Thanksgiving break, fire that generator up and run that building on generator power as we go through that testing process and get that hooked up at that point in time. And then behind the scenes, things that you don't necessarily see happening at this much. Just a reminder, we do have some work at Green Tree and McLean yet next summer, and it's civil and site work. So at Green Tree, we have a front parking lot and parking lot redesign work that includes drop-off and pickup, the flow of that traffic through that space, some similar conversations to how we looked at Jackson and so forth. How do you queue parents up? How do you bring your buses in? Updated lighting and so forth. Same thing at McLean, some lighting, some foundation work, and some replacement of those railings around the different elevation changes. And then with the conversation about early learning, moving to both McLean and Green Tree, just things like, things like playgrounds and fencing and security, and all of those pieces that we're working on behind the scenes. As we look at Silverbrook and Badger as we go towards this summer, so our architectural team in Findorf was here this last board meeting talking about where we're at with that project. We're currently at a process called design development, which is where majority of the drawings are done. Now we're tweaking and looking at individual things, and multiple teams review these drawings. Team from the district, team from Findorf, team from our architect team, EUA, as we go through that different pieces and developing those construction documents, which are used for bidding at that point. The Findorf team has been on-site both at Badger and at Silverbrook, especially on those days off at the end of October. In early mornings, in breaks and schedules in rooms, start doing investigative work, trying to make sure that we catch every little detail about how something would be installed. Things that we might find behind the walls, that's the best part of construction remodeling, is you never know what you find. So doing as much of that work up at front. And then this last week, we've been starting the process of space and site planning for the summer and fall, for Silverbrook especially. Silverbrook is a site that is used heavily by our community, and so how do we manage both our needs this summer and next fall, along with the community's use? Our intent is still to offer summer school at the Silverbrook site at this point in time. Met with the YMCA today and how that, we can work those people, and that programming into that site as we close down a portion of that building and do some work there. And then just space planning for the fall as we get ready, we'll set that building up for when it is just a sixth-grade school next year for that one year in transition, which allows us to continue that construction work into fall at that point in time. And then last but not least, a short update on Jackson Elementary. So since the last time I've been here, we are finishing up what are known as those final construction documents, and they are to be completed by the end of this month. They hit print. What that does is give us a final set of drawings that we aren't making any major changes to, or any changes in classrooms and different things. The Village of Jackson has given approvals for our rezoning of the property, our certified survey map, so we owned multiple lots. So that was combined, and then we do have a utility easement that goes through there for water, and then our conditional use permit that says, yes, we're okay to put a school on that property. We will open up bidding in late November here with some pre-bid information that will go out. That will be managed by Findorf, our construction manager. We also link all of those bid packages and opportunities on our district website under the construction link, so if there is a vendor or contract who is interested in bidding in that process, it takes them to what that looks like, who to get in contact with at Findorf if they want to be part of that process. Because this is such a large project and a commercial project, the state of Wisconsin will also do a building plan review on this. So that will go off to the state for a review for a couple of months as we do bidding. We make suggestions, our contractors who come in and do that, and then we are still starting that construction in spring of 2026. So answer any questions?
Board members, any questions? Chris?
I guess I just have a minor one because it's been lingering since last meeting. And again, I don't mean to step on anybody's toes and who did a great job planning and everything, but I can't get out of my head those windows, those inside windows in the hallways of the Jackson look with, you know, that are facing into the classrooms. And I've connected with a couple other, you know, superintendents who I know, and, I mean, it's new and unique, and I get that. But again, I'm concerned about public safety, right? Active shooter situations, you know, the privacy of that classroom, not having distractions outside of the hallway. I'm just venting those frustrations now, so that way, you know, the team can take that into consideration when we're looking at further site plans and things like that.
Absolutely, and we can take that back to our team as we continue to review.
All right, thank you. Other questions, thoughts? I will say then probably the most common comment I receive is about the windows at McLean when folks drive by.
I would agree, same thing, yep.
But if we can just remind our, our community, we didn't do that just for the looks. There are incidental benefits. Maybe you could just remind the folks about what that's for.
Absolutely, they do like, I had, I had my first chance driving past the gym the other night with the lights on and all that. You really talk through it, the idea of, I mean, I was in a classroom over there today. You talk about efficiency, you talk about energy use, you talk about the amount of light that comes into that building, you know, even some of those windows that were leaking towards the end of their lifecycle. I mean, I hate to say this, but we had a portion of that building this summer that was boarded up with windows out, and they had less leaks than the windows that we had currently installed. So it really was not for just the aesthetics look to it. It was about bringing that light in, and really that, that energy efficiency of a new window system, even the, how quiet is in some of the classrooms that maybe had that airy, open window kind of feel to it because of the old style. It's just much more quiet in that classroom at that point in time. So it truly was more than just the looks and the aesthetics of it.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? We appreciate the update and look forward to more in the future. Thank you. Next, we move to our financial report, and Lenny Hanson, our Assistant Superintendent, has come to the podium to present that report. Good evening.
Good evening. It's got me crossed up here. There we go. All right. So I'll give a update on a few different topics tonight. First is on referendum bond sales. So as a review, the board approved the sale of eighty million dollars in bonds last April. That leaves a remaining twenty-six point two-five million left to be borrowed. We do anticipate that coming in the next few months with a sale likely in January. As you may recall, when that happened last time, the district got a credit rating upgrade. We will go through a new credit rating review for the new sale as well. Probably unlikely that there's a change, they don't usually like to change them after just a few months, but that'll be part of that process. So this board can expect, probably see a parameters resolution come forward at the December eighth board meeting. It'll look very similar to the resolution that was approved last time with a maximum interest rate, term, and those sorts of things. So that's what's on the horizon as far as that goes. We've been talking at the podium many times about the budget, so kind of those last final steps associated with setting the twenty-five, twenty-six budget were completed. So the, after the board certified the tax levy on October twenty-seventh, we then went ahead and submitted the tax levy information to all nine municipalities that we serve so that it can appear on the tax bills that go out in December. That goes along with a tax levy report that's filed each year to DPI, which was completed. We are continuing to work on some of those educational materials that we talked about at the last board meeting for the public, how to read your tax bill, what, how, all the different things that your school taxes pay for. So we're continuing to work on that, so it's ready for the start of December ahead of those tax bills coming out. And then all of that budget information was submitted to Baird, one of our financial partners, who then uses that to come up with an updated multi-year financial forecast, which we'll have information from in the future and bring forward to the board as part of the financial report at that time. The last piece that I wanted to spend a little bit of time on today was, you know, with the budget being approved, taking a look at kind of long-term how the district's resources have been allocated on a high level. And I'm going to use some data that DPI provides. The most recent report is for 2023 to 24, because it takes them a while to compile all of the information that they get. But the information I'm going to share with you today from this high level doesn't tend to shift wildly from one year to the other, so it's pretty descriptive of how things were last year and as well as this year and many prior years. So when DPI compiles this information, they use their Woofar Accounting Code with, system, which is required by all districts to use. And what's nice about that is that means it gives you some really nice comparative data, so we can compare ourselves against other school districts in how we allocate our resources. We can compare ourselves against the state average, as well as how we allocate our resources. So these are the seven areas that they simplify it down to for this public reporting purpose. So I'll just talk a little bit about that and kind of give you some examples of how our expenditure allocation compares to that state average. So these are the seven areas, I'll quickly go over what they are. Before I jump into it, the one thing to remember about all of these is it's not just people, and it's not just stuff. It's really a combination, right? So when we look at instruction, you're talking about, you know, the staffing costs associated with things like classroom teachers, but you're also talking about the things classroom teachers use, materials, textbooks, programming software, all of those sorts of things. So when we look at this instruction bucket, as you might imagine everywhere, it is the largest piece of the pie in terms of where school districts spend their money, but you're talking about classroom teachers, elective teachers, paraprofessionals, and then all of the materials and software and books and textbooks and consumables that students use. So when you think instruction, when you look at this on the pie, it's what's going on in our classrooms, right? Either people or things. Then they break out pupil service and instructional staff, like support services, you would call them. They list them out here, but all of these items that maybe don't have their own classroom, but they're all directly supporting the work that goes on with students. So your student services, nursing, athletics, all things that students are participating in, but more supporting what, what goes into that. Then administration is not just administrators, but it's also all of the offices and the staff that support those administrative departments. So then like some of our major technology systems, things like Skyward, for example, come out of that bucket as an administrative cost. When we look at operations, you could basically just write Tim Harder here, because it is both facilities and technology, basically, when you're looking at that area. And then facilities, this is where it's really looking at those annual capital improvement projects, but it's excluding referendum projects, which is helpful because, you know, different districts going to referendum, that could really skew your, your allocation for one year if all of the sudden you build a new school in a single year, right? So it takes that out to try and give you a look at more just those annual year-to-year capital maintenance items. And then you've got the costs associated with the school food service program and the community service program. So that's how they divide it up. So I'm going to kind of layer this out in a few slides here, just to give it some context. So this is the state average of how those costs are allocated. When you look at all of the four hundred and twenty-one districts across the state, so you can see that that instruction piece of the pie takes up right around half of where school districts are allocating their expenses. I cut out the, the, the two smallest areas, just to make things a little bit easier to read on the screen, but the two areas that you don't see here are that community service, food service, and then, I want to blank here, community service and food service, that's right. So, here's where the district lines up here. So as you can see, we allocate a larger piece of that pie to instruction, right? Our dollars are being spent in the classroom. They're being spent on the people and the things that are in front of students to use. So I'm going to dig in a little bit more here as we look, but as, you know, the, the overall summary here is where are our dollars going? They're going to our classrooms. They're going, they're being spent on our teachers, both classroom teachers, elective teachers, and all of the things that our kids are using. So to put that another way, I kind of lined that up against the, to look at the West Bend School District's expenses proportional to the state average. So on these next couple pages of charts, the state average is a hundred percent on all of these bars, right? So trying to give you an idea, so we're roughly twenty percent above the state average in terms of the amount that we allocate for instruction, and that's what that first bar is showing you here. To enable us to do that, that then means that we are below the state average in most of the other areas. So you can see on that pupil and support staff area, we're below the average there. Administration, we're about twenty-five percent below where the state average is in terms of what percentage of the budget is allocated for that. Operations, we're just slightly under, but it is worth noting that Mr. Harder's Facilities Department and Technology Department do a really good job keeping a lot of our services and maintenance in-house, which means they get, they get funneled onto that operations side. Whereas when I go over here, you'll see on the facility side that we're underspending compared to the state average, and I think that is the case regardless, but some things that might have been outsourced work are instead really being done by our really effective and efficient employees in the Technology and Facilities Department, which helps us, you know, pay a lower cost for those services. And then also with transportation and food service and community service, we are, you know, below what the state average is there. So really, when you look at this, across all those areas, the only area where we are allocating more than the state average is that instruction side. We are funneling our resources into the classroom to be in front of kids as much as possible. And DPI has ten years of data on their website, which I cited earlier, about this, and you'll see that this is a trend that has gone back many years. We have a long history of squeezing everywhere we can so that we can get as many dollars into our classrooms as possible. As we look ahead for upcoming financial reports, some of the things that'll be on the horizon, we'll look at current year fiscal performance now that we're getting a few months into the school year. We have some good data to report on that. We'll talk some more about our resource allocation, and then we'll get into that financial forecasting that we work with Baird on. So, any questions about the report tonight?
Board members, any questions? Just wanted to double, you explained this during, and I think it just didn't click, the numbers with the pie charts, they didn't quite add up to a hundred. You said there are some other categories on it. Can you just remind me one more time?
Right, so transportation, transportation, food service, and community service are not in here. They were below five percent, so they didn't make the cut.
Great, makes sense, thank you. That was my only question. Others? Joe?
I'm just curious if there is like a per-student, you know, data, if that's out there, and if that kind of tells the same story? Anything different with that look at it?
So, it tells a pretty similar story, and we'll get into that as we get into that forecasting information. But again, since you're looking at how a district allocates its resources, in fact, per-student, it probably looks a little bit even better for us than it already does, because some districts in the state have higher revenue limits, right? So they're expensing a larger number of dollars, and a lot of times, that higher number of dollars might go to non-instruction items, operations, and things like that. So we will present that information as well. This is kind of that first chapter in understanding kind of the district's, you know, financial and financial resource allocation strategy, but you'd see a similar trend.
Very interesting view, we appreciate it very much. Thank you for your report. Next report is our superintendent's report. Superintendent Winmer?
I just wanted to start by thanking the Curriculum Committee for their work. They did have a last meeting, I know that they weren't on here for an official report, but at their last meeting, they are the team that dug into updating the course guide. You saw how comprehensive that was to get that in front of the students. The students even mentioned, I'm sure with excitement, about getting ready to pick their classes in December. So that update is important. So while you saw that as an action item, they also really dig into monitoring the curriculum cycle and the work that's occurring related to that. And I know they've been digging in a little bit more into books and resources and how they're used in book clubs or as resources in the classroom. So we appreciate that committee digging in and doing all that backstory for you so that you, you kind of get the highlights and the gist and know that it's been well-vetted by that team. Wanted to highlight their work as well as student services. They were largely responsible for creating the October twenty-third Professional Learning Day. So educators across all grade levels engaged in a district-wide professional learning day focused on strengthening instructional practice and collaboration. Their sessions emphasized high-quality literacy instruction, unit planning and content areas, and data-informed decision-making. So all the teams gather and are able to work collaboratively to review student learning data, refine any instructional strategies, and how they can support student engagement and achievement. So the day was really a reflection of the ongoing commitment that the district and our staff have towards continuous improvement and helping every student achieve. So I'm appreciative of all the work that goes into planning those days and executing those days. Just a reminder that our Student Services is inviting students and families to share their insights, that we're hosting focus groups regarding school counseling. So that feedback will help them with the ongoing continuous improvement efforts to ensure consistent, high-quality district-wide school counseling services. So if you're interested in participating, I know they'll be sending a survey in addition to some focus groups. You can find that information on your school district update, the district website for all those different dates and links to sign up. But again, they will follow up with a survey for those who might not be able to participate in a focus group, but I would encourage everyone to participate in some way. It's a fantastic time of year. We've avoided snow, unlike many of our southern districts. Some actually had their first snow day, but also lots of data gets released publicly. So tomorrow, we're gearing up for the state release of their report cards, so that information is under embargo till tomorrow, but we will certainly share a press release following that. But also, they release some scores for students. So East and West seniors who scored really well on their ACT, they actually took it last March, and now you can finally talk about that data. So we just want to celebrate that for this year, Noah Becker, a senior from West, scored a perfect thirty-six on that exam. And then high scores, again, thirty-six being possible, thirty-three or higher, we have to recognize the following: Jack Davis of West, Olivia Friedman from West, Madeline Hesse from East, Riley Herbert from West, Connor Kohlhaas from East, Anna Pop from West, Amelia Riley from East, Benjamin Sajak from East, Beckett Thill from East, and Elliott Weber from West. So just congratulations to all those students on their hard work. So just congratulations to all those students on their hard work, thanks to probably all the staff. We were kind of chuckling and trying to map where they were alumni, this one went to Green Tree, and this one went to Jackson, and where did they all go, where did they all start, the many contributors to their success. I'm sure they would point to their own families as well as their teachers. Like to highlight a couple holiday events to get on your calendars. The East High School National Honor Society and high schools interact clubs are hosting parent holiday drop-offs Saturday, December 6th, so you can drop off your children ages four through 10 at Green Tree Elementary, and the high school students will babysit so you can attend to holiday shopping. The event is open to all families in the community, and the cost is $20. To reserve a spot for your child, please do so before November 24th. You can check our website as well as your newsletters. Also, bringing back by popular demand, Santa is making a stop Saturday, December 13th for breakfast. That's hosted by the High School Culinary Program, Family Career and Community Leaders of America Club, and the Key Club. And it's in the East High School cafeteria from 9:00 to 11:00 on December 13th. In addition to Santa, the high school choir and orchestra students will provide musical entertainment. So again, check out our website or your school news for more details. Also, another exciting holiday concert is the Columns Holiday Pops Concert by the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra. So if you don't want to hazard a drive in the snow downtown to go check out the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, please attend here in West Bend. That concert will be held Tuesday, December 16th, 7:30 p.m. at the Silver Lining Arts Center at the high schools. Tickets are now on sale for $35 each, and they are available at Horicon Bank, Jeff Spirits on Main, Pick Heaters Sendix, or at The Door. I would urge you to not wait until The Door, we generally do run out, so get those tickets early at one of those venues. Again, just a reminder, Columns is a local organization that generously provides scholarships to East and West seniors each year, and this event serves as their main fundraiser for those scholarships. So we thank them for their work on behalf of our students. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer on her report? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Superintendent Wimmer. We'll move then to our discussion items tonight. And as we continue receiving background information on high school configuration tonight, we're going to talk about athletics. And I believe our athletic directors are going to be joining us virtually, and we have some members of administration joining us at the podium. I'll turn it over to you.
You're up first. Okay, are they on that?
Yep, they're, if you want to do introductions.
Well, hello, thanks for having me back. I know we have an important game tonight that I see many of you are supporting.
It's not a Spartan or a Sun. I don't know what other teams exist, John Potter.
That's right. So speaking of our teams, thank you for having us here to talk about our high school configuration process. As, let me see, there we go. As a reminder, students are assigned schools by birthdate. Eighth-grade students are provided an opportunity to request a preferred high school. Once they have their selections, their school is then locked in and cannot change without implications from the WIAA. WIAA sports also ensure that student eligibility is monitored through the WIAA bylaws and provide statewide recognition of records and titles. A club sport is a non-WIA sanctioned athletic program. Club sports are recognized or permitted by the school district, are student-initiated and often community-supported, and may compete with teams from other schools or communities. Club sports do not participate in the WIAA tournaments and operate under local or regional governance rather than the WIAA bylaws. An intramural sport is a school-sponsored athletic activity organized for students within the same school. So just to lay that basis out for understanding as we're going through the rest of this presentation, we're going to talk about all three of these. The WIA offerings that are offered for our high schools include these. Additionally, we have different levels of competition, including varsity, JV1, JV2, freshman or C-team, and reserve teams. So as we talked about, joining us virtually from the state conference is Erin Felber, West Athletic Director, along with Mackenzie Wellnack, East Athletic Director, to talk more about these different levels of competition.
Hello, hopefully you can hear us okay, sorry we can't be there in person. So just to clarify, excuse me, sports offerings, we have a varsity team and typically either a JV1 or a JV2. You'll hear as we go on, there are some sports that do offer the JV2, JV1, and varsity, but something that a lot of the larger schools in the state tend to do is they'll have a varsity reserve schedule in addition to a JV3 schedule. So there's certainly schools that we can reach out to, to have that schedule made and provide opportunities for all kids to participate in, in those sports that East and West both have quite a few participants right now. So we certainly want to make sure those opportunities all still exist, and we're willing to collaborate with those other schools to make it happen.
Steve just moved my mic, but I want to take it right back. We'll make sure, Erin, I'm just going to paraphrase, I think maybe our exterior audience might have had a little difficulty, but really, you were talking about the different levels of competition and how wide that continuum of opportunity is, and right now, we might just have a slice of that opportunity going on in our schools. And a lot of times, that's driven by size, participation. So just laying out that generally, we are hosting varsity, JV1, as Erin said, JV2, but there's kind of a wider continuum of opportunity that does exist. So we wanted to break down the athletics by season, so you can see the season, what's offered. I'm going to show you that they highlighted in purple are a blend of East and West teams, they're already co-op. Co-ops are something that WIA allows, it's a process that we explore when numbers bear questioning that, or we're creating an opportunity and trying to get something off the ground launched. And then in that light yellow, you can see that we also host quite a few opportunities that are more regional. So recall that, you know, our snowboarding, you know, extends all the way to Port Washington. Our hockey used to extend to both Washington and Ozaki County, it's shrinking, we have such a big team, it's shrinking a little bit to just our county, but there's multiple schools in all areas, you can join by region, and that's what those pale-yellow opportunities are. So we're going to unpack each by season, and what we're going to focus on are the sports that aren't already co-op or in a regional team, because those are the ones, if we were to change configuration, that would be impacted in some way. They're standalone teams right now, so we're going to hone our focus in on those. So I'll start each season with just an overall participation, so you can see that historically. Sometimes I would get like, oh, our athletics numbers are going down in those, and you can see we have historically large participation, fall and spring, those, you're running your track, you're cross-country, so you'll see bigger numbers than your winter sports, but you can see we're generally in around that 25% participation category. So again, we know that enrollment will decline over the next few years at our high school as that bubble emerges, and we'll settle around about 1,500 kids. Just a reminder, right now, we have, I think it's roughly 815 students at East and 1,003 at West in there. So you can just see that they hold participation. So one of the pieces impacted would be football. Currently, we're hosting two teams. In each slide where I talk about those, the setup is going to be the same, where I'm reminding you if it's a WIA sport, what conference they're in. So we just finished our last year in our former conference, we'll be moving to the Glacier Trails Conference beginning fall, and they're going to host a separate, and Erin, you can correct me on this, a separate Glacier Trails Conference for football, and that looks a little bit different than our regular Glacier Trails Conference, correct, Erin?
Correct. So it'll be the football-only Glacier Trails Conference, so the difference there is you have eight schools, so you have West Bend East, West Bend West, Plymouth, Kewasken, Kettlebury, Luther, Micklay jumping in there for football only, and Grafton is going to be in there as well. I believe that was eight, or maybe one, but I was off the top of my head.
Well done. And you saw at the beginning where we sit in multiple conferences. When we moved to the Glacier Trails Conference, there's some teams that we have that some of those smaller schools just don't have, so there was no competition there, so we have to go shopping for other conferences to have a seat at those tables so that we can ensure that our kids can compete. So that's why in that beginning slide, you saw maybe some different regions that we were participating in. So then for each sport, we'll look at the implications. Our youth team is already coming up to us combined. So they combined under the Badger name in 2024, and they're coming in combined. So that lends it to our coaching and our ADs exploring the addition of that JV2 team coming in combined. So as they enter into the high school, that they feed up combined and kind of maybe are looking at sunsetting separate teams and pushing up in a combined way, but again, these are our numbers right now. It was a little bit difficult for East this year, they, you know, are balancing a young team, limited amount of players. I know there was a, I think it was a JV game that we had to forfeit due to injury. We just don't have some of the numbers on the bench to fill those spots. So you can see there's no limit on those roster sizes, but if you add those other levels of play, you can expand opportunities for kids. But this is one where we're monitoring some declining numbers and exploring, no matter if there was a configuration implication or not.
Can I just ask a quick question on that?
Yeah, please do.
So I'd imagine, looking at these, if you only had, I'm going to use extreme examples, five kids going off for football, that's going to be a problem, because you can't have a team. On the other hand, if you had 300 kids, that's a different problem. When we look at these numbers, what's the general kind of optimal range for the size of a team? You know, you talked about the 46, and ran into some issues. I'm just curious what's kind of an optimal, I'm sure we can work with the range, but what's kind of the optimal size?
Not five.
Not five, not 100.
So that's a great question. There is a co-op process that gets triggered by numbers or interest, because each sport is unique in what is safe to play. So going out and playing tackle football, and you're a freshman, and you've gotten thrown into varsity-level play, that's a safety issue. So when you're looking at, you know, where are my numbers, where do they sit versus maybe another sport, so they're very unique. So there's a separate process that triggers when you start looking at data over time, and when you can see, like you said, you start seeing some dips and some potentials, so you already start engaging in conversation. And that is with the athletes, with the coaches, with everyone around what could that look like. Again, to preserve an opportunity and make it so it's a developmental sport that isn't putting safety at risk. I don't know, ADs, if there's anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yep, I was just going to jump in. So one thing to point out and kind of answer your question, Chris, would be, I'd say most of the Division I football programs around the state probably have close to about 100 kids in their program. Some are over the 100 threshold, but one thing, I don't know if everybody knows this, is the WI will not allow you, as two different schools, to participate in the same facility at the same time. So every week, it looks a little different in the fall, where if West is the home team playing on Friday night, their teams, so JV1 and varsity are practicing on the turf, and then East is practicing on the grass practice fields. And then when East is home, East will be on the turf in the flip-flop. So that is one thing we always have to be aware of with all of our sports, is they, we have to have that curtain down at the gyms, we can't have, just because we're in the same building, and we can't have them run their practices for WI sports simultaneously using the same space.
And they're real sticklers about that, because I can remember, I think you went after the question, when we had wrestlers and we had a singular female on each of the high school teams, and WIA would not allow them to practice together, even if they were going to some girls' tournaments, because it's considered scouting the other team.
I have a question. Based on the WIA division categorization, if we have combined schools, that puts our enrollment around 1,800, would it put us around the top 15 to 20 for school-sized, high-school-sized enrollments? Wouldn't that then change our division rating? Wouldn't we then become Division One, where we're Division Three right now?
So for football right now, West is currently sitting in Division Two, and East is currently in Division Three. So yes, if you had that combined enrollment, you would sit in the Division One.
So we would have, because, well, enrollment's still, enrollment's still the biggest factor in division placements. They do put, I know, some competitiveness in there, but, I mean, that would, you know, we'd have combined talent of the schools, but also now we'd be playing the biggest and best high schools in the state.
Well, we'd be one of those biggest and best as well.
We'd sure be trying to be, yeah. So, I mean, I think that's just something to consider as well, that all of our teams are going to get an elevation in competition. You know, it's not like we're combining schools and then we're competing with our local schools to become more competitive. I mean, we also then will be thrust into much more competitive divisions. I think, I just think that's important to recognize.
And just because I don't know, is that solely based off of our enrollment numbers, not based off participation?
Yeah, it's the enrollment of your school, it's not the number of people that go up for your team.
Okay.
And it goes off that third Friday count, so from the year before.
So, I mean, I just think that that is something we have to consider, and I think should get, you know, I think it's important to make sure we're getting some input from, you know, some of the, you know, maybe talking to some of the coaches as well about, you know, hey, what are you, what's your thoughts on that level? And obviously, you guys as well, understanding how that would look for our students, because, you know, I don't want to combine the schools and then thrust them into teams that have been historically performing, you know, really well at a high competitive level all of a sudden, just because we have a big school.
So let's unpack some of the other sports. Again, they're going to follow largely this piece, and as we were saying, it's the expansion of a team, adding another level of play, as Chad was saying, could be impacting their designation. For cross-country, you can see our historic participation, and then you can see around, there's no roster limits in this sport either, so it's really, again, welcoming all students in this sport. ADs, I don't know if there's anything you want to add about cross-country specifically?
Hope you'll see that cross-country and track and field kind of go hand-in-hand, where you can have a larger roster size and still have everybody have a great opportunity to compete.
Dance, again, both teams are quite small right now. I'll let Mackenzie speak to dance, if those two teams were combined?
Sure. So if dance was to combine, we would still be acting as one varsity team, because your team can be up to 24 participants, but if we would have more, we could always have a JV team as well. Under WACPC, that would be considered a JEM team, so not really JV, but under JEM. We would most likely move divisions as well, from D2, D3, up to D1 in some of our competitions, but that would be for most likely the Palm Routine. And then when you look at our other categories such as kick, hip-hop, and jazz, you can have some of your participants on your team compete in those, so it could still be considered D2, D3 in those categories. You can always have substitutions or alternates on your dance team as well for varsity. That roster would just get submitted before the competition, but those are always options for those students to grow as well.
Thanks, Mackenzie. So that one's unique in kind of the whole team doesn't move forward, but they can specialize in those different areas that she noted, and still maintain kind of different levels within. And then in boys soccer, we have some mixed numbers. So you can see we had a JV at West only this year, but again, there's no limits on some roster sizes in those pieces for soccer. Anything, ADs, from your perspective, you want to add here?
No, I think you pretty much said it, but we certainly can add a JV2 level, we could even add a JV3. Soccer, there's more kids playing at the same time, so we certainly can rotate in students throughout the games, and we can, there's a lot of schools in the North Shore Conference that do offer the three levels, so the varsity, JV1, and JV2, so I think it would be pretty easy to get games scheduled.
So for those of us who are a little bit older, like me, we used to know them as freshman, JV, and varsity, and that's now how they've just shifted that continuum. So you're kind of identifying those earlier teams and moving through and up in skill and ability, those kinds of pieces. Moving on for, yeah, go ahead.
Can I add a thing to that?
Yeah.
So for the JV2, so it is, so freshmen and sophomores can be a part of it. So a lot of times, you'll see the JV2 team is just strictly freshman, but it does allow for that opportunity if a student is not ready to move to the JV1 level. for that opportunity if a student is not ready to move to the JV1 level and they're a sophomore, that they can still be a part of the JV2 program as well.
So in some cases, it may be expanding opportunities for kids by adding those and shifting that. Girls tennis, girls tennis has fantastic numbers. We're already running varsity JV1 and JV2. And I think for this, even though there's no limits on roster size, I think some people's mind goes right to, but hey, you only have so many courts. So if you want to speak to how that could work?
So right now, as far as scheduling goes, we have to split up the East and West practices. So typically they rotate every week. So the East girls will practice early from 3:30 to 5:30, and then the West girls would go from 5:30 to 7:30. So here, you could easily break up by ability a little bit more. So if you want to have a practice, we have eight courts for tennis right now. If you want to have a practice with everybody at the same time, you certainly can. There's ways to be creative and have good practices with a lot of kids in the program. But you also have the opportunity now to take that second time slot and utilize that for your JV program. So I could certainly speak to my tennis background and Pro Field East, Pro Field Central, Middleton, Arrowhead, all of them have tennis programs that are probably around 100 kids on the team, at least for the girls. I can speak to that.
I was just chuckling, Erin, because you said we have this many courts right now. And I like the right now, in case the board didn't catch that. Did you hear her just make a play for more courts? Yes, they can be totally accommodated and we can have teams of 100. And yes, I still want more courts. I caught that, Erin.
I mean, I'm kind of smart.
Right. It was a blatant play for. Girls volleyball, I, it was kind of nice. While we didn't have a team in competition, the state volleyball meet was going on this weekend and somehow I found myself watching it all weekend. And we did get a shout out by the commentators while we weren't there playing a team. They talked about the strength of our program and gave a shout out to our schools and their volley, their girls volleyball team. So I was pretty proud of that. So given that, the strength of this program, speak to, again, this is another area where I'm already hosting three levels of play, what would that look like?
So that would be another one. So typically, so girls volleyball, boys basketball, and baseball are three of our sports where we typically can have three levels at both East and West. So for girls volleyball, we would certainly have to look to have a varsity reserve schedule. And then we can also add additional JV teams for girls volleyball. We can look into more intramural opportunities as well. So because I know in West Bend volleyball is a very popular sport and you still want to make sure that the girls have an opportunity to play if they would like to be a part of the program and try out.
Can you talk a little bit more around what a varsity reserve team is, how that works?
Yep. So most schools will have a varsity reserve with a tax to their varsity. So their varsity is practicing and you have, let's say, five to 10 kids who are maybe not getting the most playing time on a regular basis in the matches. So this would be a coach and athletic director scheduling with other schools to just play, say, the bottom 15 players of their program. So they wouldn't be bringing their starting lineup. It's, so you're still affiliated with varsity, but now you have extra opportunities for competition that you may not normally get just during your regular varsity season.
Thank you. So again, that wraps up fall and leads us into winter. Again, many opportunities are already participating in co-op teams or regional teams, and they foreshadowed some of the things that could be done at basketball. Looking again at participation, in winter, you see less of those larger, you know, these are bench sports. I have so many seats on a bench for these teams and that versus, you know, where you're running in your cross-country, your track. So again, still consistent participation across time in winter. And then basketball, we're running those pieces. Girls, we had a little bit of a nuance. You'll recall, we didn't have a varsity team in '23, '24. Again, that was one of those decisions where we launched, the numbers didn't materialize. You'll see that in winter, we're projecting participation. So they're certainly signing up and doing that. So we're projecting what those numbers are right now. Their seasons are just starting. But, you know, the girls had a little bit different where they're running varsity and JV1, whereas the boys programs are running three levels. So if you want to speak to just implications on kind of stretching out that opportunity if these were combined in some way?
So for girls basketball, I'll speak to that first. The numbers across the state are a little bit lower right now for girls basketball for many reasons. And one in particular, I would say is the club sports world. So club volleyball, a lot of times you have volleyball players who typically would play basketball, but they're choosing to play club volleyball throughout the year instead of playing basketball. So it would be great in this setting to have a JV2, a JV1, and a varsity roster for girls basketball. And then similar for boys basketball, it would be like I referenced with girls volleyball. So we would definitely, if you get creative, have those varsity reserve games. You'll find sometimes too to add about the varsity reserve games. They're often had on Saturday mornings as well. So maybe somebody didn't play very much on Friday night, and then that Saturday morning, they can look for an opportunity to play and still compete against another school in the same setting as the team did on Friday night. So that would be one where we would have to certainly look for varsity reserve, intramurals, and potentially even a JV3 team to schedule some games.
Thank you. Bowling's a little bit different. They have some different oversight. We're certainly running varsity and JV right now. And this is, again, a little bit different in the roster, but you could certainly expand the opportunity to accommodate anyone who's interested by adding levels of JV1, JV2 and expanding that. Anything else to add on bowling?
No, I think you said it. I mean, it's not bound to WIA rules. So there's a little bit more flexibility here and we certainly can, we have the space at Kingpin. We're fortunate for that partnership. And so we would definitely be able to add more to our bowling team. I know speaking for West for this year, our boys team is probably one of the biggest in the time that I've been here. And we're at 18, so we're kind of at that cusp of maybe we can even get a third team. So I would love to see it grow and I think we can provide that opportunity at Kingpin, just like we are now.
Thanks to Kingpin for that. It is, it's an amenity that not all have to have that access so close to your high school. Boys volleyball is a little bit different. It's an intramural sport. Students expressed interest and it was started in 2022. And it occurs December through February, one time a week for 90 minutes. So it's a smaller scale, smaller schedule, smaller participation. So each year, the athletic directors then survey the students, do a check-in on is it ready to move to a next step of a club or WIA? WIA would have that be a fall sport. Many are already involved in a fall sport, can't, you know, don't want to take on being a dual-sport athlete in a singular time, that kind of thing. So they kind of like and want to stay in this lane. I think I'm representing that correctly. A.D.s, anything else to add there?
Yes, you got that one spot on.
Okay. So that leads us into spring. Again, you can see we have multiple opportunities that are already co-opt or playing as a region. And again, thanks to our A.D.s, a lot of these, you'll see and recall, we're the fiscal agent for some of these teams. So that means we're taking on the burden of some of the accounting and all those bookkeepings to make an opportunity happen. I know lacrosse is probably, is that our newest sport into the WIA lineup? And I know that our athletic directors were instrumental in making that happen for kids. So I just wanted to say thank you for that piece, to that team of A.D.s who have made that happen. And that's been multiple over time. But also, you can see that spring participation, again, you're seeing those numbers bolster back up, but percentage of participation fairly consistent in spring sports. Baseball is, again, one of the sports that's running those three levels. Again, you can add JV3. We've talked about varsity reserve teams. They've got some different pieces around your roster size, around, you know, who can be in uniform, who's eligible. But there's ways to expand those opportunities through those JV3 or varsity reserve pieces that we've talked about before. Anything else to add on baseball? I think I've got that and you've done a nice job explaining.
One big two is just, it's nice to have a partnership with Cuss Field, so Ragnier Park, where our varsity games are played, which frees up some space here at the high school because we do have two baseball fields at the high school that are in good shape. And we can definitely have those JV3 games added comfortably.
Good point. Boys golf, you'll recall that girls golf we didn't talk about because they're already co-op, but boys are still running two separate East and West teams. Again, running currently just varsity and JV1. You can expand that opportunity. We do play off-site. I don't have my own golf course, again, much to my consternation, but you could add JV2. Anything else to add around expanding that opportunity for boys golf?
Nope. Again, we have a good partnership with the West Bend Country Club and West Bend Lakes. And we definitely would be able to expand and have larger practices and provide those opportunities for the kids.
And then softball, we, again, probably much like baseball, rostering a team. We have varsity and JV1, too. You spoke about some of the athletics, fields, amenities, et cetera. Any implications for softball that you'd like to add?
I think we talked about it with the other sports. So they would be in the same boat. Right now, looking at our projected numbers for this spring, as of right now in November, we're probably looking at a JV1 and a varsity team for both East and West. So we still have room to add that JV2 team that a lot of schools do have around our area. And then we can also look to expand from there if needed.
And then boys tennis, I know it's very similar to the girls as far as running different levels. They're a little bit smaller of a program than our girls program by extending those, but a lot of the same kind of rules and conditions applied here. So I'm not sure if you had anything else to add for boys tennis?
I think you got it.
Thank you. So track and field, you have boys and girls teams from each school of varsity and JV. I know they spoke a little bit about the implications along the lines with cross-country and those, but there's, you know, different events within track and field. If there's, you know, running shot put, high jump, long jump, those kinds of things. Anything else to add from your perspective, A.D.s?
So one thing, I know we've been hosting here is an open meet where we allow everybody to participate from your program. So that would be something that'd be great if the configuration was one school and the team was a lot larger. And then also with track and field, just to point out that an athlete can only participate in four events in each meet. So that is a WIA rule, and that does include relays as well as the other events.
And in track and field, is that the one that they actually host a JV State tournament as well as a varsity State separate?
They do, yes. That is correct.
Because of how large those teams are and get and creating those opportunities?
Very large track and field teams that attend. And Arrowhead is one of the hosts of a big meet as well. So we would want to reach out to as many larger schools that have meets for JV level that we can.
So just so I understand, so for track and field, so if we had 50 kids who all wanted to be in boys 100-meter hurdles, you can do that?
We, they wouldn't all be boys 100-meter hurdles at the varsity level.
Right, exactly.
However, they would be able to have opportunities at JV or maybe through that trap with the coach, they might find that the 200-meter actually might be calling their neighbor a relay or something else. So, but they would still compete for those top varsity spots. Yes, that is correct.
So is there a maximum size that could be on JV, that can be on varsity for track? Not really?
I mean, I think just glancing at these numbers, I know we had just a couple of years ago, 59. I think back in 2019, there were 68 on the West boys track and field team. And that never felt crowded. So I think we would have to really make sure that we have JV opportunities and even trying to spread out our practices a little bit with the space that we have. And we would be fortunate, right now, we're sharing between four track and field programs in the spring. So we would just be sharing between two. So we would have some more space to work with as well.
And I asked the question, I used silly examples, but there are a lot of, I mean, there are a lot of kids that's 80, but it looks like there's quite a bit of capacity for larger teams in track. It's built for that.
Yes. And there are quite a few events as well. So I don't think any of our track coaches across the board, East or West, would say that they have too many kids. They would love to have more and more participants.
Okay, thank you.
And just to point out the data for the, yeah.
I've got the, I've got the real data.
Yeah.
If you look, you're replicating boys all across. I do have a girls' team. And we will update that. But just to give you that perspective, so the, you know, those pieces for East and West are hovering around like the 50 mark, 40, 50, 44, 57, 51, 58, 55, looking at participation over time. So we will make that correction and update that. So you're looking at accurate data there. So again, just to wrap up, we've gone, we kind of started with this by telling you kind of what conference and where everyone was. And here, we've just reiterated the sport and then added what we talked about. How would you extend that opportunity if something were changed? And you would do that by adding that continuum of play as well. So we just wanted to summarize that there and all the different opportunities. For us, it was important around preserving opportunities for kids and what might be an inadvertent consequence that people do or don't think of. I know athletics is generally the top of mind when they think the one or two school and what that could mean. But again, there's implications that you could extend the amount of offerings, that continuum of play, change in designation, those kinds of things to create that. So are there any final questions?
Chad's question about division had me thinking about conferences and maybe enrollment doesn't play as big a role. But I feel like where I grew up, in your conference, you were a similar-sized schools. Maybe you weren't all in the same division.
That's not the same anymore.
Not the same. Okay. So that's not, there would be no need to change conferences?
Oh, there will. There will. So we've been, you bring up, and we were laughing because we're like, should we put the D1, D2 on everything? And it's like, okay, it's so all over the board. So I'm going to take us back to the very first slide. And you see, I sit in five conferences now. Back in our day, you sat in one conference and you had all your sports offered to you and you kind of played against each other. But we're sitting in a conference now. I forget, how big is Kiwaskam High School?
800, 600.
Yeah. So they're a lot smaller. We're sitting with those kind of pieces. And recall, we appealed WIA last year, no, the year prior, multiple times on this new conference that they were pushing us to. We're all over the board. And where we reside, they split a district. One district, you know, Sheboygan, I've got one of the teams, but not the other. You know, it's just very unique in how that process goes. So I may or may not agree with that all the time. So, but it's not as easy because they talk about numbers, competition, where you drive to, all these factors that play into that. And then you kind of get mixed up. And there were different football conferences than there were for this. And so I think everyone tries to do their best, but they just don't all line up across all those factors. They just don't.
That's going to, I mean, it's not just going to change the teams that we play, but also obviously the locations of where people are traveling to play. I mean, some of the, I have the WIA pulled up here and, you know, just looking at some of the schools that would be similar to our size, it's, you know, Nina, Milwaukee Bradley Tech, Fond du Lac, Arrowhead, Racine, Marquette, Oak Creek, Madison. You know, I mean, these are not Slinger, Hartford, Kiwaskam, you know, we're not talking about a Saturday tournament where you just drive to Slinger. I mean, now we're talking about.
We don't get to drive to Slinger anymore anyway because they change it. And that's what, you know, that's what is hard because that's what's meaningful, I think, the most is the crosstown rivals that you've built, all of those things. When we were having to change into this new conference, we were still like, oh, can we do a non-conference game with you? Because, I mean, I enjoy, you know, that crosstown rivalry. Our kids enjoy the cross-hallway rivalry in that lead-up and those things. So I think, you know, as you explore, that's some of you explore that, some of those, if you're, you know, kind of when we culminate this and we want to move to that next step, that's where your focus groups, that's where all those pieces, where you dig in around, you know, what does that mean to you? What does that mean to you if you're a football player? What does it mean to you if you're this, if you're that, you know, all of those pieces? So I think that, some of that emotion and then that reality of that kind of is where you dig into that next layer.
All right, I have one more.
Go ahead.
All right.
This might be for the ADs.
Thank you.
Just as we're, as we're thinking about this idea of combining high schools, is there, are there any particular sports or any aspects of this from an athletic standpoint that are particularly daunting or scary to you?
So if I heard you correctly, you're asking if there's any parts that are daunting or scary? Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. I wouldn't say daunting or scary would be the word I would use. I think that there's definitely room for opportunities. And I think it's going to look, if we explore this configuration, it would look different for each sport. And I think there's, you know, there's challenges to face, but I don't think it's anything that we as a community, as a district, that we wouldn't be able to do and accomplish and make sure that we are providing those opportunities. So maybe if you asked me a few years ago, I might have a different answer, but I feel pretty confident in our systems in place and the processes that we have in place right now.
And not only, I think sometimes, you know, when people ask me, they're like, oh, you know, which which way to follow? I said, you know, it's a myth of whether it does or doesn't. I really can't, I could have six schools that I say are under that roof. I could say there's two. I could say, you can create whatever configuration. You can also see, we're not hampered by co-op in these teams right now. So that authority lies with, you know, the WIA. When we see that coming, we have 17 different things on the board that are that we're already doing. So I'm not hampered. My kids haven't lost because I've lost some of those numbers. We've we've acted strategically on behalf of kids and programs to keep them. But is there an opportunity? Yes. Does it come with a host of, like you said, some challenges or some implications? It sure does. So it's interesting to delve into.
We definitely need more tennis courts.
I told her, I'm like, you know, all I gotta do is say-
We need at least as many as Cedar Rig has, come on.
That's what, when she was saying, is there anything challenging? She's like, if there's like four more courts, I could overcome anything.
I feel like they were subtly bringing into a golf course for ourselves.
Right?
I feel like both-
I for sure don't play golf. I always say I'm an award-winning golfer and it's only because I got shortest drive at a tournament once. So not not my forte. So again, it's kind of an iceberg, really getting you the understanding, because I hear a lot of myths, you know, like, oh, sports are going way down, especially, like I said, if you if you have to bench a team because you're in recovery, if you can't run a team, you know, there's all those. But you can see your numbers are remaining strong participation wise, percentage wise. And I know that, again, we're kind of looking future forward when we settle around 1,500 kids and what that what that really looks like too. So.
And one myth that I just want to speak to is that there's oftentimes when it comes to talking about co-ops, people ask me if their team is still going to be able to bake the postseason and the playoffs. So as long as, right now, for the co-op process with WIA, as long as you're meeting that timeline and their deadlines, the team is still completely eligible for the postseason and playoffs. And the same thing, if the school was to be reconfigured, they wouldn't be, I want to say, penalized, and they would, they would still be allowed to compete in postseason, subsectionals, regionals, state, et cetera.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think one of the questions that we might commonly get is, well, and I'll just use basketball as an example, there are five people that could be on the court at one time. And so if you have a whole bunch of people on the team, clearly that's going to be a problem. What I'm hearing here and looking at the final slide is, you know, what we're able to do is we're able to open things like JV1, JV2, JV3. So yes, there's maybe more categorization of people in different talent levels, but it looks like there's either no roster limits or there's opportunities to unfold into JV1, 2, 3 for people that, no, you you have the opportunity for more court time. May not be on the varsity team, but there's more, but there is opportunity. Would that be true? I mean, just want, I'm just trying to recap this.
Yeah.
Yes, that is, that's true. I'm sorry.
You're good. We're both just saying yes to that.
Yes, that's true. And the other opportunity there too is the the intramural piece. There are a lot of kids who don't necessarily want to be on the actual high school basketball team, but they love basketball and they would love to get together every Thursday evening and have an opportunity to have an intramural team that just competes with themselves instead of having to compete against other schools. So there's that opportunity as well.
Thank you.
One comment and then a question. So the comment is, and I'll preface this with, I'm not athletic at all and it never happened. But as Mr. Pickler knows, I have two boys that are ready to be the next football players on the high school team. So all that in mind, I guess I just think that, yes, we have a lot of opportunities. We're still going to have a lot of opportunities. But the, while we might have two really good, you know, football teams, for example, we could have one like amazing football team. And to me, I think combining our efforts to have the top quality team in whatever, you know, section of that sport that there could be, I think, is to our benefits more than it is to to not be. So that's my comment. My question is about volunteerism. Do we currently have any issues with getting coaches, getting assistants and faculty getting involved? And if so or if not, how do you see that changing in a in a combined system?
I mean, we've been fortunate to have some great coaches and in some of our sports, we have a lot of longevity with some of our coaches. Certainly, I mean, there's there's sports and especially in the assistant role, if you're not working within the school district, it's oftentimes hard to make that work with your schedule of a 2:45 practice or a 3 o'clock practice. So there is some some change that goes on between between year to year for that. But I mean, we've, we've been lucky so far. So I think we do a good job of recruiting. I think we run good events where people want to be a part of that. And I think part of that is to just go in off of the sportsmanship and hoping that the reputation of West Bend East and West Bend West and the community is is strong and that people want to coach here. So and I think a couple of years ago, too, we looked at the compensation model for our coaches and we've been doing a really good job of continuing that study. So I think that's important as well, so that coaches can feel valued and appreciated.
So Erin, if we're combined, though, do you feel like, is that going to be more of a challenge to recruit those people or to our benefit or neutral?
I think it'll be less of a challenge. I think more people will want that opportunity. And then it'll be more challenging on our end to sit through and make sure that we are providing the best possible coaching staff for for each program.
Okay.
Deeper pool of applicants potentially for that. I think one part, like you said, while we're always filling those and I'll say inspirational, but it's highly manipulative. ADs, don't ever stand in a room with an AD because by the time you leave, you will have started coaching something. They would have signed you up for a CDL, so you're driving one of their buses or you're selling tickets. They're they're very good at that. But that is one piece where maybe not in the coaches or staffing our events, but the transportation. When there was a critical shortage, I cannot tell you how many people stepped up and got CDLs. You know, Lance Rell, one of our principals, will drive buses. We will put him on a route. We will put him, you know, and thankfully, he was going to some sports events with his own kids and but, you know, parents were doing parent contracts to take teams. We were hurting to find people because we were always traveling a team. You know, we had more transportation than. So I think that was one area where we felt it. Everything else we filled or, like you said, you might have some turnover some from, but that was a real pain point for a while.
Board members, other questions? It's obviously a very rich area and I'm sure if we have follow-up questions, we can designate them your way.
Absolutely.
Direct them your way, pardon me. Thank you. And to our athletic directors, thank you for joining us during your travels. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Yes, we're at the state athletic director conference. So we're learning lots of good ideas to bring back.
Fantastic.
They're the only two ADs that are sitting in a board meeting right now.
Thank you for- Yeah, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. All right, we move then to our future agenda items and our board meeting calendar. We have the following meetings on the board meeting calendar. They're all scheduled to take place here at the Education Service Center. November 24th, regular board meeting, 5:30 PM. December 2nd, curriculum committee meeting, 4:30 PM. December 8th, regular board meeting at 5:30 PM. And December 15th, the regular board meeting at 5:30 PM. Can we encourage members of the public to check for the official postings in case the date or the time or the location may have changed? Anything to add to the board calendar? All right, hearing none, we move to items for follow-up and communication. Any items for follow-up and communication?
No, just some pieces that we had foreshadowed prior. We're looking at owners' rep contracts. We're also working through some final agreements with the Village of Jackson. Those are still pending. You'll see those. We're just finalizing, getting feedback on that policy 830 around facilities use and getting that out to different entities using our buildings. So when we've got that feedback, we'll bring those items back. So you'll see those on future agendas.
Great. Any last minute questions? Any final questions on that? Right, hearing none, we have reached the end of our planned agenda. And so I would move to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. We have a motion and second to adjourn. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Thank you. The motion to adjourn carries. We stand adjourned. We look forward to our next meeting. Thank you to those for joining us in person or online.